Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the October 22, 2003, meeting of the Palm Springs Planning Commission. Mr. Evans, do we have a report on the posting of the agenda?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, the agenda was posted Friday in accordance with state and local procedures.
Thank you. We have some minutes to approve. These are the minutes of the September 10, 2003, meeting. Michelle, I think there's an error on page 10. And if my memory is correct, on the matter at the bottom of page nine and the top of page 10, I think that vote was 5-2 with Ms. Morantz dissenting and someone else, but not me. I don't think I dissented to that. I think it was somebody else. Does anybody remember that offhand, if they cast a negative vote? This is the one where the House that was out of code and...
Right. I think there's...
I think you did.
I think it was me.
Yeah, I'm...I think it was...pretty sure it was Matthews.
Yeah, it was, because we were surprised.
You were surprised at voting, so I'm afraid to kind of go out on a limb.
John?
Other corrections? Yes, Mr. Okonkwo?
Yes, I think the same case number on page nine, where we were saying that we are letting them within six inches of the rear property line. I think that should be six feet. On page nine, second lying down.
Nine feet, six inches.
It's nine feet, six inches.
Okay. Excuse me.
No, we didn't read that.
I didn't.
He's getting to sentences now, that's good.
Other corrections? If not, do we have a motion to approve as amended?
Move approval as amended.
Is that right? So close. So close. We have a second by Mr. Matthews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We're going to take a matter out of order because we have a...otherwise, we're going to lose our quorum. Mr. Wright has to attend the high school homecoming parade and leave early. So in order to accommodate that, I'm going to call first...the first item will be item five. This is an architectural approval item, case 3.2390, application by Robert Greer for architectural approval for a new single-family residence with guest house located at 523 Potencio Road, R1A Zone, Section 15. This was continued from the meeting on October 8, 2003. And I have to abstain on that matter. I'm president of the O'Donnell Golf Club, the adjacent property, and I'll speak on this matter.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I will also be abstaining on this item. However, I drew the short straw, so I will be sitting here for a quorum and not voting. Correct?
Yes. Go ahead. I also am abstaining, and at the last meeting, didn't draw the short straw, and so I'm out of here. I'm a member of O'Donnell and also a member of their advisory board, or something like that.
And I'll be passing the gavel to Jerry.
Let me get the right one here. There it is. Case 3.2390. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is an item that's been on your previous agenda, was continued so the commissioners could take a look at a story poll in the field. And I think all the planning commissioners that are going to participate in the vote today have had a chance to see the story poll, just for the public's purposes. Commissioner Morantz has a conflict of interest on this one. She drew a straw at a previous meeting to participate for purposes of a quorum. She is not going to participate in discussion or voting. She will abstain. But for purposes of a quorum, she will sit through this item. This is an item that's a new single-family house. I'll have Gabriel give you a quick, very quick overview of the plans. I think we went through them. What I'd like Gabriel to do is point out proximity to O'Donnell. You did receive oral and written testimony at a previous meeting relative to the O'Donnell Country Club Board of Directors' concerns about the placement of the residence with relationship to the golf course, particularly, I think, the second-story element. And for the public's purposes, a story poll is a very unusual way to describe that the site was outlined in chalk. The two-story element was outlined in tape, and then they put a pole up at the height of the two-story element so that the commissioners could see the height of the two-story element, the placement of the house. And I know that the two commissioners that I went out with actually walked the site and looked at it from other vantage points, including the golf course. With that brief introduction, Gabriel Diaz will just quickly re-familiarize the commissioners with the site plan and orientation relative to the golf course.
As you guys have already seen this and as came before you, a quick overview, this is the O'Donnell Golf Course. And just above it, in this little area, actually, it's a pretty big area, is where the home will be situated. This is the O'Donnell Golf Course. Currently, you have access from...jeez, I forgot. Over this way, you come in. This is the guest house. You have the main home, and you have the tennis court down here. This is the main home right here. And up there is the two-story element, which is a small portion of the home, and is situated towards the rear of the property, looking from the O'Donnell Golf Course here and there. This is the guest house, small guest house, located here on the property. Main home located on this flat portion of the graded property currently. And then we have the tennis court. From the main home, you walk down into this part of the property, and it's the tennis court, where they keep it as flat as possible. The area currently there is relatively flat and probably the only place they could put this tennis court on their property. Other than that, any questions?
Why don't you just refresh everybody on the merging of the four lots into one lot that's relevant to this?
Previously, there is a track map for four parcels on this lot. The applicant will...it was previously approved for four parcels. Here's parcel three, parcel two, parcel four, and parcel one. So they could be able to come in and submit for four homes. The applicant has decided to just merge them back to the original one big parcel and build one home. So you could be looking at four proposed homes, but instead, you're looking at one home and more open space and less building of the hillside. In Plank's opinion, this is a better...better for the hillside area.
Thank you. Commissioners? Comments? Larry?
I have a question on the glass. Is it a...I have a concern about reflection. Are we going to get a lot of reflection off this when the sun comes up in the morning? That...
It's in...you know, as my recollection, and I'll double-check the material board, it's non-reflective glass. Any glass can have some reflection and glinting in the morning. On this site, it's hard to get it in the afternoon. But there could be some. My feeling is we'll probably see some reduction in glazing as they go through the detailed energy calc, because there's an awful lot of glazing on the exterior of this house. So I would suspect we'll see a little bit less. If the commission was concerned about that, you know, on the south elevation, possibly on the east elevation, you know, you might want to...I'm not sure if there's any special type of glazing that's non-reflective, but you could have a little bit, just as you can get it from the houses up above this and a little bit to the north.
Thank you.
I think we had some concerns when we looked at this first about the color of the masonry. I understand there are proposed...some other colors have been proposed. Or was there like a color board or anything that...
Here's the material sample board. It's the original. It hasn't been revised.
Okay. It must have been just other materials.
And these are neutral, real materials. We have Onyx, we have polished limestone, we got Navajo white, stucco, we got the natural mountain being left alone, and Corten steel and aluminum.
Mr. Evans?
Yeah, if the commission was concerned just about visibility of the structure relative to color, if they were to deepen it up a little bit, they could probably make it blend in. The houses at the very end of Alejo, at Chino, are pretty good examples of a little bit darker hillside colors. I think the perspective drawings, the computer-generated drawings are probably much lighter than what they proposed relative to the colors. But Navajo white, it might be a little bit bright.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I think that was a concern, as we looked at the computer-generated images, the starkness and trying to be maybe a little more tuned in with Tony and those colors down, the structure with all this glass and with what appears to be stark white is going to be in your face enough as it is, so...
I have another question on the...there's going to be a...with looking at the footprint of the house, there's a couple areas that are going to be in a valley. Are we going to...is that going to stilt up, or are they going to backfill the little crevice and build up from that? Or is it going to...the footings are going to be low, then they're going to bring the masonary up to it? What I'm concerned about is scarring of the mountain with fresh fill being put in.
The way that they've drawn this, you know, and I think your prime concern is this little valley here, there's another place in here where they've got some areas that they've got to fill in. If you take a look, the idea is to basically build stem walls up in the various locations to try to take care of that. I would suspect that when they get into final design and actual detailed engineering, this house may shift a little bit here and there to avoid some of that. When we look at these, we don't allow them to come back in and do fill conditions, and what they're really showing is a situation where, with the exception of getting in to cut the footing and having an area to work, they really shouldn't kick any fill material over. They do have a couple of places, particularly over in the tennis area, where they're actually going to support with columns. They've got some free span here to cantilever, so that they've created situations, you know, in their preliminary design where they're trying to deal with those fill conditions. And in some cases, there's some cut conditions that they're going to, for the most part, cover up with structure. But typically, you know, a lot of those fine details are really the final engineering, and that's where we probably spend three or four times the amount of time looking at that grading plan than we do the rest of the project as far as that kind of detail.
Any more questions? No? Oh, as this is a public hearing, open the floor to public comment. If you would, please attempt to limit your comments to three minutes and identify yourself and sign in, please.
I don't think it's a...is this on?
Yeah, John.
Yeah, I don't think it's a public hearing item, but it's an architectural review item at which...
Thank you.
We did get an opportunity to speak last time. And I appreciate the opportunity again. My name is John Schoenberger. My address is 760 Sierra Way, Palm Springs. And I'm here to address the commission as a citizen and a member of the Board of Directors of O'Donnell Golf Club and also as the president of the club. I've been a member of the O'Donnell Golf Club for approximately 22 years, and I've been on the board for roughly 15 years, and I've been the president for the past seven years. And we did since the last hearing get a set of the plans, which we were able to review. And most of the members of the Board of Directors had a chance to review the plans. And since the last hearing, we've also had the footprint of the building chalked. And as Mr. Evans mentioned, we had a story poll put up, which allowed all of us to get a much better view and understanding of this house. And on behalf of the club, I want to say that the Board of Directors is unanimously in opposition to this application. So this is not just one or two people speaking, and there are other board members here to also voice their view. But the view of the board is unanimous in this regard. The standards by which this residence is to be judged are set forth in our architectural review ordinance in Section 9404 of the city zoning ordinance. And so in terms of the standards by which this residence is to be judged, our ordinance tells us that all buildings that are built in the city should become a compatible part of the total community environment, both in the local neighborhood and in the city as a whole. So the first standard is compatibility with its environment. A second standard is that a building should have a harmonious relationship with existing and proposed adjoining developments. So we see the word compatibility with environment. We see a harmonious relationship with neighboring properties. And there's also a standard that the building design, materials, and colors should be sympathetic with desert surroundings. Now, judging this building, proposed building, by these standards, our board feels strongly that this building fails the test. And I hope you, each of you, had a chance to visit the site, to see the story poll, to see the chalking or the paint spray, and to see the yellow tape that marks the two-story bedroom element, which causes us the most concern. And if you did, I think you saw, as I did, that this is an enormous structure. It's in excess of 10,000 square feet. And I'm not sure what happens in the final engineering, but the way the building is spray-painted, the footprint, they're going to have to cut or blast away part of the mountain at the...on the uphill side of the property to make their pad on the uphill side. And they're going to have to fill at least part of the small ravine on the downhill side of the property. It's a pretty little ravine that goes down to the fifth hole of the golf course. If you saw the paint spray, it runs down, well down into that ravine. So something's going to have to be done there. From our point of view, the structure simply does not fit the site. It looks like it is being...to us, it looks like it's being forced into this location. This residence, as you can see by the schematics and the elevations we have on the board and also the smaller ones that I handed out, is basically all metal and glass. The design and these materials, from our point of view, are not sympathetic with its desert surroundings. There will be a 30-foot-high...there will be 30-foot-high glass walls looking directly over the third and fourth holes of the golf course, just a few feet from the edge of the Now, as we know, the height limitations under our code for residential structures is 18 feet at the roof line. It is possible to obtain an administrative modification for hillside homes. And by an administrative modification, a residential structure on a hillside location can go up to 30 feet. But our statute says only if it is not detrimental to adjacent property. Only if it is not detrimental to adjacent property should that 30-foot administrative modification be permitted. And O'Donnell feels strongly that the 30-foot wall of glass that is created by this second-story bedroom element is detrimental to its property. I think the pictures that you have, both on the board and the ones that I handed out, the smaller ones, demonstrate that this residence is not compatible with its environment, is not in harmony with adjacent property, and is not sympathetic to its desert surroundings. I'm aware that this residence has been through design review, and in that hearing, O'Donnell was not represented. I'm still not sure whether we got notice of it or not. We were supposed to get notice, but we don't have a record of it. And we may have got it, but in any event, it didn't get to the board. But I cannot believe that design review fully understood how this residence relates to its The only way that I think you can really sense the impact of the residence is to go up there and look at it and see what we've seen with respect to the footprint and the story poll. One last point. The comment was made at the last meeting that 10 years or so ago, an even bigger residence was approved for this site. And it may have...that may be true. But I want the commission to know that I never saw the plans for that residence. And to my knowledge, the plans for that residence were never presented to our Board of Directors. And O'Donnell never approved that residence. In fact, I wasn't aware that that residence years ago had been approved by the city until our last hearing here in early October. We are asking that the commission either deny this application for the grounds that I've stated, or send it back to design review for re-study, where O'Donnell can make its concerns known to design review, and perhaps some modifications of this residence can be achieved. There are some other people here that wish to speak, and I want to thank you each for your time.
I know there's some other people from O'Donnell here. Mine is Robert Greer.
But I know, Mr. Wright, you indicated that you were going to have to leave, and I can't...
But I'm not going to leave before this is over.
Okay, then...
I'm not sure what else somebody else can offer. Do you want to use one statement?
I'll keep it very brief. I'm Ingrid Bedur, and my address is 1401 North Palm Canyon Drive. I am a member of O'Donnell, and you know that as a board, we voted unanimously, as Mr. Schoenberger indicated. I really wanted to add, as a resident of the Las Palmas neighborhood and, of course, of the city, I've driven by this property since the polls have been up. And I do have concerns about the height of the second story as an individual, as well as being on the board. I mean, this isn't just an issue that's going to affect the golf club members. I think this structure is so large that it's going to really dominate a large part of the hillside and be a dominant feature seen by the entire community. So I just wanted to add that, that I have concerns about specifically the second story, and hopefully, something can be done to it, if it has to stay, if it can be moved back closer to the mountain or to the south, so it isn't so pressing and so dominant a feature of the second floor, of the entire mountain. It is quite a large structure, and it is very dominant. And I am concerned about the compatibility with the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Bill Healy. I'm a citizen of Palm Springs. I reside at 1680 Ridgemore Drive, and I am here in my capacity as a citizen of Palm Springs, as well as a member of the Board of O'Donnell, and specifically also serving as its treasurer for the past seven years. So as to not be redundant, but I certainly want to echo both John Schoenberger and Ingrid Bedur's comments relative to all of the matters that were referenced to, including the compatibility, the harmony with the surrounding development, and the sympathetic aspect to the desert surroundings. As treasurer of the Board of O'Donnell here in Palm Springs, it is of a particular concern to me with regard to the effect that a structure of this size and placed in such a prominent position on our golf course will have, both from a retention as well as an acquisition aspect with regard to our membership. The membership of many golf clubs have been affected. It's a very competitive environment. And O'Donnell, over the years, has been known to be a private enclave. It's been a respite from the rest of the world, although it's in an urban, generally urban, setting. And as such, in its environment, one of the great draws of O'Donnell is its ability for its members to be able to go there and enjoy the surrounding environment. The structure, as proposed, at 10,000-plus square feet, is so prominently placed, particularly overlooking the fourth and fifth holes. And the fifth hole for O'Donnell for many years has been the signature hole. It's been...there have been numerous articles in the paper. It's been photographed as such. And there is...the board feels very strongly and has asked me, as its treasurer, to share with you our concerns about the effect that this will have with regard to both the retention and the acquisition of new members, and therefore, the financial, continued financial viability of being able to operate the golf course. So I would like to once again state my objection and, consistent with the members of the board, our request to either deny this application or to refer it for future study. Thank you.
Thank you. Have you signed the clipboard, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Additional comments? Mr. Greer?
Thank you. Thank you for commenting this. I guess I was...chose my naivety to assume that the opposition would be lessened by pointing out some miscalculations that O'Donnell made before. A lot has been made on these pictures that you've been looking at. And these pictures are from a rendering that my architect prepared years ago. I presented this rendering to the O'Donnell Board, as well as a model of the parcel that I had originally proposed. And these pictures... And in these pictures, I, what we have to emphasize, is these pictures do not represent the actual look of the, of the, the structure. The plans represent the look. The plans are what the Architectural Review had before them. They didn't have these pictures. They had the full set of plans. When I, after the last meeting, I went, I delivered a set of the plans to one of the representatives of O'Donnell, who happens to be an architect, and he was surprised because he said that at the last hearing, their objection was based on two areas: the height of the second story, which they said they believed to be 45 feet high. And the way they came up with that is they took a measurement off of this rendering, okay? And it's not 45 feet high, it's 30 feet high. The other representation that they, that they made was that the, the structure impacted the 30-foot zone at the northeast corner. Okay, when we staked it out, that clearly showed that there was no impact on, we're way beyond the boundary restrictions on all sides. One thing I want to make, bring up real quick, that a couple of the Commissioners mentioned. Number one, as to color. The drawing board or the sample board is completely an error on that. The colors, there will be no Navajo white, it's all going to be a dark color, consistent with the two houses that are on the hillside behind O'Donnell, the darker brown. That's, it's, that's an error that's been overlooked, but I can make that representation today, that that's the color scheme of the house. The house is designed to blend into the hill, not stick out. As far as the glass goes, one of the architects at Design Review was, was, was asking about the glass, and, and, and as I mentioned to you before, the Design Review Committee didn't just haphazardly look at this. This was their second look at it, and, and they unanimously praised the design. Contrary to, to not being harmonious and out of place, they thought it was a world-class project. That's what they said. Anyway, the glass, the glass will be tinted, there are certain sections on glass that, on the plans, that appear to be solid glass, but will actually be more of a, it's a new, it's a new type of material out, that it's more of a, it's an opaque thing, it's a semi-glass, and it's a different type of construction material, so it's not all glass. The other thing is, you have some isolated pictures. If I may approach you just quickly, this is a full copy of the book. If you look through it, you'll see that the predominant structure of the, of the building is not glass. There's, you know, there are all walls there. And so there is admittedly a lot of glass to take advantage of the site and the view. So those are the, the points I wanted to make as far as the construction. Now, as far as the, as far as the house itself, I'm having a difficult time finding, placing in my mind the role of O'Donnell in the development of this project. This was, you know, not a public hearing. O'Donnell was aware of the other stages on the, on the proceeding. I talked to one of the architects at O'Donnell that's on the board, and he knew about the Design Review hearing. And what I'm trying to do is figure out the relationship between O'Donnell and the Planning Commission and myself, in trying to build a house. And, and I'm, I'm, if it's, is, if, is, if, is O'Donnell another, another body that has, we have to go through, I don't know. But I'm trying to evaluate what their real objections are to this project. And apart from the fact, the obvious, you know, that they don't want anybody to build anything on the, on the hill. And if I'm not mistaken, and I apologize if I make a, an incorrect statement, but I think Ms. Bedur brought a buyer to me a year, a couple of years ago, that wanted to build four houses on the property. And I, you know, that didn't go through, and then I decided to stop the parcel, the parcel development and build the one house. But it, looking, in looking at what the O'Donnell objections are, let's think about it. It can't be, it can't be the size of the house, really, because you're talking about an 8,000-square-foot house located on the only buildable pad as it now exists without disrupting the hillside. 8,000-square-foot house with, with two adjacent structures on 10 acres, okay? 90% of this hillside is going to remain untouched in its natural condition. 10% is going to be, is going to be the site of this house. So it can't possibly be the, the size of this house. The second thing is the color scheme and everything. I told you, it's going to be dark colors, it's going to blend into the hillside, it's the whole concept of the house is to be on a tiered level where it looks like it's coming out of the hillside. Is it harmonious with the community? Four or five blocks away, you've got the world-famous Kaufman House. This house was, was, has its heart and soul in the Kaufman House, that Nutra-designed house. I mean, this, this is not, this is not just me saying that this is a neat architectural project. Your Design Review Committee unanimously said that, you know? So I don't think it can be the design of the house, and, and the two houses that are immediately behind and adjacent are very similar design. Admittedly, not quite as much glass, but they're the same flat roofs, square features. I think, if anything, this house perfectly blends in to the immediate area. And, and the, and the, the ordinances that Mr. Schoenberger cited, and, and that he most graciously sent to me, I think, rather than support the position of O'Donnell, more, more appropriately, support this type of a residence. A single residence on a large piece of land, doesn't disrupt the community, doesn't disrupt the area or the, or the particular environment. The last thing that I can figure out is that, they, so they don't, you know, they don't, can't be the size, or the location, or the colors, so now it's, we're back to the second story. And, you know, they thought the second story was 45 feet high. I showed them it's 30 feet high. They couldn't figure out exactly where the, the second-story bedroom, all 700 square feet of it, was going to be located, and so I had the surveyors go out there and draw everything around there, and it, it's, as I told them. And I, when I met with Mr. Schoenberger at the site, I told him, there was some confusion about where the, the second-story part of the structure was, I told him, if that second story is where he thought it was, I won't do it. I won't have it there. But I didn't think it was there, and it's not there. It's set back further. I think the, the second story, when, in the final form, as viewed with the plans, as opposed to this rendering, is a, is an integral part of it. I don't think it, it's, it, it becomes an abstract part of the structure, and it's required, actually. So I think that's where, I would respectfully submit that, that this Commission accept your staff recommendations, accept the unanimous vote of confidence given by the Architectural Review Board, and allow this, this project to go as submitted. And if I can have, if I can answer any other particular questions on the structure or anything else, I'd be more than happy to do it.
Quick question for you.
Sure.
Where's your utility feed coming from, and down the road?
No, it comes across O'Donnell. Many, many years ago, when Mr. Kohler, the residence that, that Mr. Schoenberger was talking about, Mr. Kohler planned to build that, a two-story house, by the way, on that whole project. He negotiated with O'Donnell, and again, I hope I'm not misstating anything, but he negotiated with O'Donnell where he would give part of the tee box area that's presently on the, I think it's the third or fourth hole, to O'Donnell in exchange for an easement to bring the utilities across. So now the utility feed comes across the golf course, across...
So it's already fed?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and so the utilities would go across O'Donnell, and, and, and so that part of it, and, and O'Donnell has, has always been very cooperative in, in allowing me to, to put the utilities across during their seating time and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Questions?
Mr. Greer?
I have a question for, for staff.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Schoenberger talked about the proposal, when you have a, what he called a, an administrative consideration. Can you tell me what that means?
Yes. The zoning ordinance has a administrative proceeding called a minor modification. It's in the variance section of the code, and it allows the director the ability to approve modifications to zoning code provisions in hillside areas, things that are unique to hillside areas. We can approve setbacks adjacent to streets down to 10 feet, building heights based upon topography, site design and the like, up to 30 feet. And the intent of that is to recognize that sometimes it makes more sense to stack units and put buildable area atop buildable area, so you don't have as much land disturbance. That minor modification, the way we work it, relative to an item like this in all-new hillside development, if the Planning Commission approves the project, we're going to approve the AMM. So essentially, you make that decision, and then I do the paperwork. There are some cases where somebody does a very minor addition, where I might do a, you know, staff may approve a minor change to a hillside house and issue an AMM that the Commission may not have heard, and, and we always refer to it as administrative minor modifications, what the code says, minor modification. So it's, it allows that discretion. The properties to the northwest of this site up on the hillside were approved with that type of code concession. There's, you know, a much more difficult site to build, and you have two-story structures up there that exceed 18 feet in height. Mr. Chairman, could I make a couple of comments regarding...
Please do, Mr. Evans.
The code, you know, the crux of this issue is the findings and determination that the Commission, you know, needs to consider, you know? And during the testimony, you know, you had a paraphrasing and a reading of the Hillside Development Code, that you have to make findings that it fits, it's in the right location, it's harmonious, colors, materials, the grading, and all, all of those issues make this project fit. I think one of the key issues when I've dealt with, with hillside homes is color. And the applicant has indicated he'll bring a new color board back, and he'll try to do something that matches the existing houses further to the northwest up on the hill. And I can tell you, the upper one was built with that earth tone, and the lower one was built with a gray. And we had a ton of phone calls about gray up on the hillside. So, you know, that's why I think the applicant is, is re-studying the colors and can deal with, with that issue. With regards to how staff analyze this site, you know, it's, it's almost a 10-acre site. It's approved for four single-family homes. By right of zone, with a minor modification for the building height, the proposed house could be built on one of the existing lots that stands today. It would meet all the setback criteria of Lot 1. And I can tell you, my experience today is that nobody is going to build a 3,000 or 4,000-square-foot home on an acreage lot, particularly a 10-acre lot, considering land value. I'm dealing with other hillside homes, and on small hillside lots, they're wanting to push 5, 6, and 7,000 square feet, because that's what people are looking for when they start looking at hillside lots. They want very substantial homes. So when we looked at this one, we, we looked at the past history, which I referenced briefly before. We looked at the subdivision history, we looked at the physical site, we looked at aerial photographs. I worked on projects where they modeled the site. This is the best site up there for a home, unless you want to push it back and cut the hillside more, or push it over and create probably a taller structure with more hillside impacts. There are probably three conditions you may want to consider if your inclination is to approve, and I'm going to sum up with what are your options today, so the Commission understands options. If you choose to move in the direction of approving this, I'd ask that you add three conditions based upon the testimony today and the hillside ordinance. One, you get a revised color board, and that can be approved by staff. I'm probably going to push them in the direction of something with a little bit of olive in it, and I'll show them a house in town that's probably the best hillside house color, and it was done by Stephen Chase, and it's probably the best hillside compatibility house, and it's an 11,000-square-foot house that fits. Two, that the Commission require an open space easement for the undeveloped area of the house, that you allow staff to work with the applicant on defining the extent of that easement, so that after they develop this site and they have enough room to do operation and maintenance, that there be an open space easement, so somebody doesn't come back in five or 10 years and say, "I'd like to build three more houses up here, and oh, by the way, you approved that map one time, and my house fits on Lot 1." So you would take the ability to re-subdivide the property away, the easement would be granted in favor of the city for open space. And then a third condition, that there be no fill slopes allowed, that all, it'd all be retaining wall conditions where the slopes, in theory, could be exposed to adjacent developable properties downhill of the site. And basically, that's what they proposed, by reiterating it in a condition, when they come in with a grading plan, if they have fill slopes that you can see from O'Donnell, we will tell them, "You can't do them." And that'll drive how they, they build stem walls, or cantilevered, or other types of things. That's one option for the Commission. And you could add conditions, you could move the house back, you can do whatever you want if you wanted to change it. Or you could say, "We approve it subject to elimination of the two-story unit or bedroom, put it someplace else, subject to, you know, staff approval or somebody else." So you have a wide range of discretion on how you approve it. You can deny it. You can adopt the findings as, as presented in the testimony, and basically make a motion for denial, and say, "We deny it because we don't think it is." And just do a reverse of what the positives are and the negatives, and I think you heard testimony to that effect today. You could refer it back to Design Review, but I would caution you, your role is to deal with neighborhood issues. Design Review's issue is to bring you the best architecture, the best site plan that they think the property needs to be approved. I think they've done their exercise. At one of the Design Review meetings, an O'Donnell representative was there, expressed concerns about the location, and that was the first meeting. The subsequent meeting, I don't think O'Donnell was there. But, you know, you could refer it back, but I'd suggest you do it based upon site design and architecture, not based upon input, and create a public input process at Design Review, because you're supposed to deal with community impact. Design Review is to look at architecture, site planning, and landscape. And they were very, very strong in support of this project, so I think it would just come back to you, would be my guess. But those are your options, Mr. Chairman. I can help you craft motions, if that's your pleasure, but that completes our comments.
So thank you, Doug. Commissioners, comments?
Part of my understanding is, the biggest problem is perhaps the second-story location. And I think part of, you know, a motion would be, if approved, that the second story would be set further back away from the outside wall that it's on, and that would give the appearance of the building as not being so tall and stark at that position at that point. That'd be one of my thoughts.
Well, you know, as I'm looking at the drawings, I guess, I don't think that, you know, O'Donnell Golf Course will ever approve this glass-modern building sitting above the course, whether the, whether the two-story is setback or not. As, as I've been on the site, as I look at the drawings, it's great architecture. It's, as we're sitting here with Palm Springs, being noted for modernism, the mid-'50s, and that type of architecture, we're not noted for a Spanish Revival look. O'Donnell is. My preference, I'd love to see the O'Donnell House sitting over on that lot, because that's where my tastes go. But looking at the criteria that Mr. Evans spoke about, we've got the height, the setbacks are there... (end of transcript) are there. I don't see where, as a commission, you know, we really have to look at this for what the building is. The other thing is, when somebody buys a lot, they come up with a class-type project, I think they have the right to build that house if it meets the criteria the city has established. It is compatible with the city. It's not compatible with the O'Donnell Clubhouse, but if I, as I stood on the site yesterday, it looks slightly to the northwest, it's right there as I looked across at the Hyatt, at the other hotels, other construction that I could see clear across the valley, I didn't see a bunch of red tiled roofs. So, Mr. Wright?
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we, in case 3.239, I make a motion for approval, subject to the conditions of staff with, and make sure we have the three options that Doug included, revised color board proposed by the staff, the open space easement, and the third item with no fill slopes allowed without retaining walls. Is that enough for the motion, Doug?
Is there a second? Can I second, Doug? I'll second. We can just, it's just a, not a roll call vote, is it?
It'd be a voice vote unless there's more discussion.
Okay. Any more discussion?
I would like to add into that motion with the setback of that second-story bedroom, if we could do that, if I could add into that.
The motion maker and the second would have to agree.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You can't. It's two, three with one abstention, in favor of construction.
The majority of the quorum, you know, carries the item and we'll talk to the concerned parties about appeals so that they know their, their options.
Thank you. If we take a five-minute recess before we go to the next item?
We're back, actually, we didn't, we didn't ask for public comments. So, anyone that's here wishing to address the commission on any issue before the city, this is the time. Please limit your comments to three minutes. If you're here on an agenda item, an item that's on our agenda, we would ask that you reserve your comments until that item is called, but if you do wish to speak now, this is the time. Anybody wishing to address the commission at this point? Seeing none, we'll pass on to item number two, public hearings. This is case 5.935 PD 59, application by Desert Chapel for revisions to the Desert Chapel master plan, Plan Development District 59 for consideration of special events, nighttime football games and rededication of the Sunny Dunes Rightof Way located on 10.16 acres at 630 South Sunrise Way, PD 59 Zone, Section 24. This matter was continued from the meeting of October 8, 2003, and I note, Mr. Evans, we have a request here that the matter be continued again, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we've been working with the applicant. They've asked for one more continuance. We're hopeful that they will not ask for another one. They're working on some revised exhibits, I believe, for your next hearing.
Do we have a motion then to continue?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Shall we open the public hearing? Anyone here wishing to speak on that matter will open the public hearing. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion.
It was moved and seconded.
We have a motion and we have a second. This is a public hearing item, so I guess we have to roll call vote. Michelle?
Mr. Hockenado?
Aye.
Mr. Grinch?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Morantz?
Aye.
Mr. Schonberger?
Aye.
And Mr. Chairman, we assume the commission's pleasure was to keep the hearing open.
Yes, we'll keep the hearing open and continue it. I guess I did close, close the public hearing, but that was my fault. We'll keep the public hearing open and continue the matter, the public hearing until November 12, 2003. Case number four is case 5.0974, application for a conditional use permit by John and Janet McSweeney for construction of a casita located at 5200 Menlo Circle, R1C Zone, Sections 24 and 25. Do we have a staff report on that matter?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Our newest planner, Matthew Feskey, is going to give you his staff report.
Thank you, everyone. We have a proposal by Mr. and Mrs. McSweeney to build a new casita on their property. The casita will be adjacent to their test court and the Taco Wheat's Creek Golf Course is right here. The casita will have a bedroom, living area, bathroom and kitchen, and it does exceed 150th of the lot size. Their intention is, for the casita is to be for family overflow and occasional guests. And this is an aerial showing Menlo Circle and this is Cherry Hill Drive right here. Are there any questions that I can answer for the commission?
By how much does it exceed the lot size? Either in a percentage or square footage?
They are proposing 668 square feet.
Okay, and what, what would be allowable based on the lot size?
They are allowed 632 square feet.
Thank you.
There is one other note I'd like to make aware. I have had several calls from neighbors, concerns about a casita with a kitchen that this will not be a guest house slash family overflow. And I have expressed to them that I have asked Janak McSweeney on many occasions what this is intended for, and she has repeatedly said that it's for, mainly for family overflow. Are there any other questions?
Any other questions of staff? This is a public hearing item. Anyone here wishing to speak on this item, please come forward, give us your name and address and sign the clipboard. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and back to commission for any further comments.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I'm just curious because this is the first time we've done this after that new state law that, I don't know if it's in effect or goes into effect. Is that in effect yet or is that January 1?
I believe it's, I'd have to double check, but the city's ordinance is still in effect and until we change our ordinance, we're going to continue with the city's current ordinance.
Yeah. Well, the, good luck with that and, and wish you well. I intend to support this for two reasons. One is the amount's pretty small and two, it's adjacent to a large open space area, the golf course and, and then also in light of the change in the state law. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd move approval of case 5.0974.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the application. We'll need a roll call vote, Michelle.
Subject to the conditions in the staff report.
Okay. Mr. Hockenado?
Aye.
Mr. Grinch?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Morantz?
Aye.
Mr. Schonberger?
Aye.
Our next item is a sign program issue. This is item number six, application by Rio Fine Sign Company for a sign program amendment for 254260, 254 through 260, North Palm Canyon Drive, CBD Zone, Section 16.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. There's a lot of exhibits on the board, but let me call your attention to the exhibits all the way over in here. We've got an existing restaurant, Enzo's. It's on the second floor of a existing building in downtown. It's a building where Cafe St. James started. It's been a building that's been kind of a struggle for signage for an awfully long time. Back in February, they came in and asked for a sign that projected quite a distance, 65 inches away from the building. That sign was denied. They've subsequently put up a sign, we don't have a picture of it, but it's basically just a, a letter, channel letter on the building, a non-lit. They're doing an awning program where you can end up with awnings over each of the entries. And what we've been working with them on is to come back in and do a blade sign that would set below the awnings, you can see in, in cross-section of the building, would set below the awning. The awning would be in front of the opening on the other side and the sign is from the face of the building or the column, 24 inches out as opposed to 65 inches out, sets below the awning, fits in quite well. And it's a neon sign, it's a salmon color, vertical, so you'll have this type of logo script, although coming down vertical. And staff does recommend approval of this. We think it's, it's probably an outstanding opportunity for this business to have good signage and maybe get them a little bit more recognition for the good food that they serve.
Any questions of staff? Do we have a motion?
I will. I will make a motion for approval.
All right. Ms. Morantz moves to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Excellent, excellent choice.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Case number seven, case 3.1868, application by Shaw Mizrahi for architectural approval of a remodel of former bank building located at 296 South Palm Canyon Drive, CBD Zone, Section 15. Have a staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, as a quick background item, as Gabriel pulls the, pulls the previous exhibits off, this is an item that's a remodel of an existing old bank. It is a phenomenal space. If you haven't been inside it with, with big beams and open, really makes a great gallery location. They're proposing to come in and fill in the drive-through area with a very unique fence design, wall containment, and use that for outdoor gallery space. They're going to come in and take the curb cutout on Palm Canyon Drive so the sidewalk continuous, continuously goes across. We, we did-
We did find a CEQA exemption that says removing motorcycle parking is okay, the parking that's up on the sidewalks, so actually it'll take care of a, kind of an ongoing problem of motorcycles using the driveway to park almost on the public sidewalk. Design Review did recommend that the large graphic panels be re-studied and reduced in size, that there be no artwork allowed, I mean, excuse me, no graphic text allowed on the panels, that they really be artfully done, and the arts, because they're going to have the appearance of public art, our policy is that the Public Arts Commission has to approve the actual panels, and then will approve the actual size in conjunction with Design Review, if that's comfortable with the commission. You know, I think Design Review liked the panel idea, but they felt they were just too large, and that they really should just be graphic panels that are artistic, they shouldn't have any lettering on it or implied signage, the way these are, and they just put something together that they clipped, you know, to give you an idea of what the panels could look like. We've added conditions of approval to that effect, and I think Design Review was most impressed, not only with the existing architecture that they're not touching, but also a very unique little fencing detail that's on the left of the plans, basically vertical glue lamb beams, and creating something that'll have a real strong feel to it. And, Mr. Chairman, that completes our report. We'll certainly try to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions of staff? Anyone here wishing to speak on this item? If not, we'll go back to the commission for any further comments or motions.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion for approval of case 3.1868, for approval subject to conditions specified by staff.
Including the recommendation of the Design Review?
Including Design Review recommendation.
I'll second.
A second? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further comment? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We'll move to item eight, case 3.2400, application by Chris Solin for Alvin Fuchs for architectural approval for new single-family residents located at 225 Bogart Trail, R1C Zone Section 35.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is an item that Gabriel's been working on. Gabriel, give you an idea of where this is. This item is recommended for approval, subject to conditions. One of the conditions is to not use a concrete S tile, but to actually come in and use a two-piece, well, actually, the recommendation was a flat concrete tile, although I think Design Review did leave the option open for a two-piece clay barrel. The applicant does have concerns about this, so they did submit letters. Gabriel's got letters and some photographs that we can show you, and, but I'll have Gabriel go and give you an idea of where the project is and what the design entails.
Basically, we have a single-family home going in the Bogart Trail area. Here's an aerial of the vicinity that we call, that staff looks at. You go down South Palm Canyon, and then you go east on Bogart, and will be the first home that you would see on your right-hand side coming into this newer development going into town. It's, here's the aerial. It'll be located here. Design Review did approve this home as it is. The one condition that they did have was for a flat tile, and adding a window to the east elevation where the garage is located. Here on the Bogart Trail, we have new residents, residences going in, and will be the first home that you will see on your right-hand side. Currently, across the street, there is a home built, and you can hardly see that house because of so much landscaping. Here we have the roof plan, and that's about it. I guess the main issue that we have here is the roof tile. Here are the colors that they're proposing as far as the roof, and we have a sample of that roof right here. And I guess this is Design Review's recommendation for a flat tile. That ends my presentation. Thank you.
Can you enlighten us as to, you know, I'm sort of looking at this, and I'm not an architect and whatever, and, you know, this is a beautiful home, whoever did it, and I'm missing something from Design Review. Was it, what was the issue?
Chairman, if I could go through that, the, I'll give you a brief bit of history. The Millner subdivision was subject to a building moratorium relative to the Canyon Park Resort, where after maybe one house was built, there was a building moratorium. After that moratorium, a couple of houses went forward very quickly, and the city took a position of just getting building permits out to deal with a public relations problem. One house with a concrete S tile was approved in that timeframe, a house right in that timeframe had a two, or, excuse me, a one-piece S clay tile, and then subsequently, there was one concrete S tile house that was built that I did not research. So out of all the homes in the area, just to give you an idea, you know, 18 or 42% of two-piece clay. You know, there's clay S tile, there's two houses that are existing and approved that way. There's two houses with S tile where they have or are required to put in a two-piece edge, to give it a feel for a traditional two-piece barrel tile house, indicated there's two S tile concrete. There's 11 flat tile roofs. I can tell you that almost all of those flat tile roofs came in the first time through the review process with a concrete S tile, and they were somewhat contemporary as far as the design, and the developer was given an option, you either come up to what it was then the community standard of a concrete clay two-piece tile, or do a flat tile. That developer chose to do flat tile, it made the houses look more contemporary, and then there's seven houses in the neighborhood that are contemporary design with no tile at all. Design Review is consistently, based upon commission direction, going back quite some time, we were bringing every one of these houses to the Planning Commission for Planning Commission review, and the Planning Commission's position was, as long as you put two-piece barrel tile on the houses that are Mediterranean design and have S tiles or something like that, staff, you work with Design Review, and if Design Review's comfortable and the tile's right, approve every one of the houses, and we've approved about 18 that way. This particular house, the applicant, has a very strong belief that the concrete S tile is the appropriate tile for their architecture, and the only reason that we brought this forward to the Planning Commission is the applicant was concerned about the requirement that they either use a flat tile that represents or replicates more of a slate or a shingle-type look, a more contemporary look, or, and it may be my bad recollection, but I also think Design Review said, but if they wanted to upgrade it to the two-piece barrel, that would be okay, too. The architecture of the house could go either way, and they've submitted letters and photographs. I will comment that a number of the photographs taken are not in this subdivision, they're either in the Andreas Palm subdivision, which is not subject to architectural approval, with the exception of the rear yards of the homes that face on Bogart Trail. The commission did not require Design Review on the inside of that subdivision since it was gated. Some of the homes that are photographed are in Park Andreas, they're not in the city limits, they're Riverside County, and there was no Design Review at all for those homes, some beautiful homes in that area. And then some are in the older parts of Andreas Hills, where back in the days that they were looking at rift tiles, either by design of the house or decision-making, and I wasn't involved in those, so I can't represent what happened, there is some concrete S tile. And then I think they do have a photograph or two of condominium projects as you come into South Palm Canyon that have concrete S tile, but I think they, those concrete S tiles fit a different type of architecture. So I know the applicant has concerns, they wrote two very nice letters, their architect communicated the concerns. That completes our report, and we'll certainly try to answer any questions relative to past practice, this house, or any other questions you might have.
Well, I'm still, Mr. Evans, I'm still a little bit confused, the architect, the applicant wants to use concrete S tile, correct?
Correct.
All right. And Design Review said either use a flat tile or a two-piece tile, but not, I'm still not sure.
Their actual recommendation was use a flat concrete tile to make it look more contemporary. My recollection was that they also said if you wanted to go to a two-piece barrel, that would be okay.
That's okay. All right.
I don't recall, you know, I stepped in and out of that Design Review session, but looking at the architecture, if it were upgraded to the two-piece barrel, I don't think Design Review would have not approved it.
Any more questions of staff? Anyone here wishing to speak on this item?
Good day. I prepared a statement rather than trying to fumble through what I need to say this afternoon. My name is Alvin Fuchs, and I am representing myself and my partner, Claudine Messica. Let me preface with a bit of background information, I was commuting to this area for almost two and a half years when my lady and I decided to move in together. She is a local Realtor, and I am starting up my own business. We both joined the Palm Springs Chamber of Commerce so that we can begin participating in the community. We purchased two pieces of property at 225 and 275 Bogart Trail respectively. We contracted with Chris Saleen to be our architect, and have found him to be both a pleasure to work with as well as professional. When we recently turned in our plan to the Architectural Review Board, there were some questions and comments about the design. As Chris had to recuse himself as a member of the review board, the first comment by a review board member was, quote, "Now it's time for vengeance," unquote. This was said with a grin. Claudine could not believe she had heard that, because for us, this is a serious matter affecting our money, our home, and our future here in Palm Springs. The first issue had to do with windows on the east face, which is one side of the garage. We agreed to have windows added as it would provide daytime light to the garage. The second issue had to do with the roof and concrete S tile versus concrete flat tile. The review board had some discussion and then agreed that only flat tile would be appropriate for this architectural design. When Claudine commented about the decision, the other comment made by a review member was that, quote, "We are some of the top architects, and if we think it will not look good, then it won't," end quote. I must say that art, architecture, and design are subjective topics. I might not like Picasso as an artist, that doesn't mean his work is no good or that it would be inappropriate. I believe that the design of this home, based on collateral information provided by you, to you, by our architect, is well within the parameters of the existing Palm Springs City design. We are doing nothing out of the ordinary or outrageous, and as our private home, we would like to choose the materials and roof that we like. What we are trying to accomplish is having a well-built, good-looking, comfortable home in which the two of us can live and enjoy our future years here in Palm Springs. This is where we are choosing to live and run our businesses. We hope you will not force us to go elsewhere. Thank you for your consideration.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the matter?
Pardon me, you'll see why I'm an architect and not a speaker. I tried to kind of get something together, but I typically do better things, I write it down, and that's probably why you got a letter that's as long as it is. One of the things I think is really important here is that these people are, oh, Chris Saleen, the architect. It's a different situation to design something for a businessperson, a business enterprise, a business building, or houses for sale on the market. I don't know if anybody's ever built your own house. It is a taxing process on the homeowner. It is also a very rewarding process for the homeowner, because it's like anything else that, once you've always lived in homes, that you bought, purchased that were on the market, they finally get the chance to actually design one to their needs and pick and choose the elements that they really want, and Claudine is a real estate agent, she sees the market on a daily basis, and has totally impressed me with her astute selection of many materials and what sells and what doesn't, and what styles sell. She kept reminding me not to go too far one way on the style, not to go too far on the other, and I really respect that opinion, because I think it really comes from somebody that knows the market and knows the design qualities about it. As far as the, and this is my take of kind of what the review process does, I think the main thing for review processes, and the reason they're there, is to maintain the value of a community, to be compatible with the community, to assure that all the houses in the community are maintaining the value of the other houses. And one thing I just realized, and it was inadvertently here two weeks ago, the real estate section on the cover had a house that's $1,350,000. Now, this is down in Park Andreas, which I realize is further down in the community, but it is part of the overall general community, and it has exactly the same shape, not the same color, the same shape of rift tile that's what my client has selected. And I think you'll see that it's a very commonly used in a wide variety of houses, this is $1,300,000, there's some that are far more than that, I suppose there could be somebody sitting here that probably has it on their own house, the house I live in has that tile on it. So I don't think it's a matter of one being better than the other or one being different. The one thing that we really like about the concrete tiles as opposed to the clay is that the concrete comes in a wider mix and variety of colors, we can really get that southwestern color in, and it's just simply not available in clay tiles. The few colored clay tiles that I see tend to be very bright and kind of garish, and we wanted to stay away from that. The last thing I'd like to say is it really is about a matter of choice, and this is a particular house for a family that wants to live in it. I really want to support their good selection, I think, and their freedom to have the choice to really live in a house that they enjoy, and I think that's really what architecture's all about, the enjoyment of the place you live is a service that I like to provide, and I think it's a good thing.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? If not, we'll go back to council for any comments, further questions, or a motion. Or commission, I'm sorry.
Sean?
Yes?
I have a question on your sample board of tiles, is that's the mix of all the tile on the roof, or are you picking one out of that?
It's a blend, and actually, each tile has a blend of color in it. So what you're seeing is a fraction of each tile, but it is a multi-blended color to give it an overall tone.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a comment, Mr. Evans?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, with respect to the applicant's concerns, we have had houses that have been represented by builders, but they've been the owner's houses, and they've had to make the change in tile. I can tell you that I've already been contacted, because they were at the Design Review meeting, by a builder that's built a number of homes in the area, where they originally wanted to do concrete tile, and the city would not allow them to do it, so they probably built the majority of the 18 homes. He tells me his biggest problem in selling houses right now is that there's one concrete tile house in the area that people drive by and say, "I'd like that one," and it was one of the first houses that was ever built in the subdivision. And, you know, I can tell you- And, you know, I can tell you, the builders that have invested down there, whether they're commercial builders or they're rebuilding for clients, will question the city's consistency if one house is handled differently. And you will probably have additional concrete tile roofs, and Design Review will not likely approve them. You'll be looking at them, and we're really almost at the end of the subdivision, not at the front end, not in the middle, but we're getting down to where we're finishing the subdivision. So I'm just telling you that I'm going to get phone calls starting tomorrow if there's a change of position of the city with regards to roof tile in this neighborhood.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that, but I'd like to move the approval of the project as submitted, and I have a comment after that.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I, you know, I think we do need to look at every application on its own merits, and while this may create, I think looking at a subdivision is different, or looking at a large number of houses is a bit different from looking at a single house, single owner, owner applicant. But let me ask Doug, on the other hand, I don't want to create some furor necessarily. In this subdivision where this house is located, and you went through your research there, are there any other houses in this subdivision that have concrete S tile?
Two.
Two. Out of how many houses?
I didn't add up the total.
No, I mean roughly.
Approximately forty-three houses, somewhere in the forty, early forties. Gabriel, I think, has the number up there.
Forty-two.
We counted forty-two existing homes. There are two with clay S, or, yeah, concrete S tiles.
All right. The others are either clay tiles or a concrete flat tile?
Yes.
Okay.
Two-piece clay. There are two, there are four clay S tile houses in the neighborhood, two of which have had to go back in because they made mistakes and put the wrong tile on the houses, and they were required to go back in and put the two-piece tiles around the edges. So on the edge condition, it has a two-piece barrel tile. And I've got one of those pending, whether or not they're going to put it in, and they'll want to appeal that back up to the commission, I'm sure, and the appeal period's over, so they're kind of stuck.
Can I comment?
Yes.
On the numbers? Out of forty-two homes, eighteen homes are two-piece barrel, which is forty-two percent. And then the second largest number of roofs are the flat tiles, which are eleven homes with flat tiles, which makes up twenty-six percent. That's it.
Well, and one other question, Mr. Evans. Maybe you can, you can help me, not being a tile expert. What are the concerns, if you know, or Gabriel, if you know, of the, of Design Review for concrete S tile? I mean, what's, what's, why, why, why do they like other kinds of tile but not this tile? I mean, if, if concrete, flat concrete tile's okay because it fits a particular architecture, why is there this opposition to concrete S tile?
Well, you know, first and foremost, I'll just reiterate it. The Planning Commission set the tone of the tile requirements when you started approving the first houses. And you said houses that have a Mediterranean feel have to have two-piece barrel, and Design Review has been executing that for ten years. Secondly, in direct answer to your question, with regards to the type of tile, the two-piece clay is a traditional roof tile.
Right.
It's got a much richer feeling to it. It's got a much richer look, and it's a traditional, older building material. I think most everything that the architect indicated, it's a little, it's more expensive, without a doubt. It is also more brittle, you know, and a little bit subject to damage over time, but our most treasured Mediterranean buildings in Palm Springs have the two-piece barrel tile. The clay tile, or the concrete tile is viewed as a, not quite as rich a material. It's considered more of a builder grade as opposed to a custom grade. You can find differences all over the Coachella Valley, including our community where people build different types of roofs. But this one really, the issue was really established by the commission when you started looking at every one of these houses, and you told us, "Don't bring these houses to us," essentially unless they have concrete S tiles. So that's why it's back before you, you know.
I wish Tracy were here, who's our, sort of our tile expert, but since she's not, we're going to have to move ahead. We have a motion to approve the application.
I guess I empathize with the architect and the applicant. As we've sat here and denied every application for anything other than a two-piece tile, I'm hard-pressed to say, "Okay, we're going to make an exception now." I think the other thing is that I drove down there and looked, and I looked, well, I didn't see what the big deal was because as you drive through, you don't realize we're Palm Springs ends, and Park Andreas and those hills begin with the other homes. There's a lot of homes with concrete tile. But from my perspective, we have set a precedent over many years that is going to, you know, unless there's a major change in direction, but less than a month ago, we had somebody pull a roof off because that's not what was approved, you know, the six buildings. So that's a concern. I just, my own house has got them. I wish they had two-piece clay tile instead of the one-piece S tile, but, so, you know, I couldn't support it.
I, you know, I don't think the inconsistency is that big a problem, and I wasn't on the Planning Commission ten years ago when they decreed that a certain tile had to be there. The Design Review said it's either got to be flat concrete or this S concrete, and, you know, you know, I've been around enough of the design things, you know, if we get five architects in a room, we can probably get six opinions on what works, and this isn't a bad house. And I appreciate the fact you're investing here, and this is the kind of thing that I think drives people crazy building in Palm Springs. And that's why we've got a willing builder, willing homeowner, and a professional architect designing really a nice house, and we're bouncing them around over whether it's going to be flat concrete or curved concrete. And the job at Design Review, and they're going to all be upset, whatever, is they've got to convince the architect that this is a better deal, and if they didn't, then the architect with this particular client's going to come to us as an appeal, and that's why I'm going to support it, and that's the way the system works. Sometimes you don't get what you want in the court, and sometimes you don't get what you want in the Design Review. I don't think Palm Springs is going to grind to a halt. That's the process that we have in place, and yes, other people may change things. This isn't a six-home division that we gave to a developer who just pulled a fast one and put on a different roof. We've seen that. That's a different deal. Here are people who followed the process, who just have a different view on what they want to put on their house than Design Review, and I suspect Design Review's not going to be happy, but I'm going to support it, so.
Yeah, and I, I'm inclined to, although certainly I want to give Design Review all the due respect that they deserve, and I know Mr. Salin is a very active and loyal participant in Design Review. I don't see this, from my point of view, as being a big precedent-setting deal, or necessarily the commission going back on some policy that has no exceptions. We've got some concrete S tile in this development. We certainly have it around town. I don't see this as an earth-shaking deal myself, although I do, I don't like to create problems for staff whenever we can, but anyway. We have a motion. Is there a further comment? Do we have a second?
Yes.
And we have a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
We have four ayes and one no. So the application is approved, subject to, we have, are we, is this subjecting to any other conditions?
I don't care.
Okay. All right. We'll move on. Thank you, folks. Oh, my. We'll move on to item ten. We'll move on to item ten, case 5.0910, PD 277. Application by Interactive Design for Final Development Plan Approval for Coyote Run Two Apartments located... Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped nine.
Chairman, go ahead and do number, the next one there in the audience, I don't think.
Number ten? All right, we'll finish with number ten, and we'll come back to number nine. Again, this is item ten, case 5.0910, PD 277. Application by Interactive Design for Final Development Plan Approval for the Coyote Run Two Apartments located at 3801 Sunrise Way North, PD 116 Zone, Section 35.
This is the first set of the final plan, I'm sorry, the final plan development district that you have seen earlier. For orientation purposes, the site is located right here at the northern extension of Sunrise Way. This would be Phase Two of the Coyote Run Apartments. You have previously seen the architecture and the material sample boards. In June, this went back to the Design Review Committee for some looks at the materials, no change in materials, at the window placement, and a couple of other details. What the committee said was they could go forward, and they have finished their construction documents and brought them for you to review this day. We're recommending approval pursuant to the original conditions of approval, no new conditions. The architect is present, and representative of the development company, the Housing Coalition, is also present and happy to answer any questions you may have. As you may have some questions, we have a concrete tile on these, exterior plaster. We also have the metal awnings, which we're going to talk about on another project coming up. Pretty standard. Essentially, it matches the Phase One of Coyote Run. For those of you that haven't been out there, we recommend that you drive by. They're a very well-maintained multifamily project in town, something we can all be very proud of.
Alex, you just have to go through Design Review a second time.
Yes, it has gone.
Their comments were...
Their comments were, "Bring it to Planning Commission."
Anybody here wishing to speak on this item? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve case 5.091, PD 277. Approve as submitted.
Second.
Any further comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We'll come back to number nine. The director is asked, because we have people here on other items that will move through the agenda, and then come back to number nine. So we'll pass on to case number eleven. This is case 5.0845, PD 262, TM 29632. Application by Bundy Finkel Architects for Approval of Final Development Plan for Architectural Plans for Four Model Homes and Preliminary Review of One Custom Home at the Estanciaus located at Akanto Way, R1B Zone, Section 35.
Thank you, commissioners. The item before you is an application for Final Plan Development District. This was reviewed this week by the Design Review Committee. There are no changes recommended. Pretty high-quality residential development. Just to give you an idea of where this is located, it's located on Akanto Way, and these homes back up are fairway homes. And the project that Gabriel mentioned earlier was right about here. They are in a Spanish or Mediterranean style. The applicant has had a chance to design the four models, and they've kind of rethought their project in the meantime. Their thinking originally was they'd build the tract and offer models and kind of have four product types. However, since they're originally conceived of the project, there has been some demand to have a more diverse housing range, and they have also prepared, which you will look at a little later, a contemporary or modern house for one of the lots. So what they're going to do is they're going to, or their intent at least, is to build the four model homes and offer those, but also offer a range of up to seven or eight different contemporary homes, kind of at a custom home basis type of construction. In terms of the materials, for these kind of classic or Mediterranean style, it's smooth stucco, two-piece tile, and these are in the one-to-two to one-to-four-point-million-dollar range. We have the Model Plan One Montecito, Plan Two, the Cabrillo. They're noted for their tower elements, some of the traditional iron work, fountains and tile work. Again, metal details, kind of high-level detailing. The second model also has some of the interesting details. You'll see here the fan lights, the stone around the door, the metal detailing work. Plan Three is the Belisa, again, the tower elements, strong dominant chimney, garage doors, the detailing, awnings, nice detail there, some of the lighting elements, kind of heavier chimneys. And Plan Four, the Castillo Plan, again, with the tower elements, the tile. And that is essentially it. What I'd also like to do is show you the contemporary model that they had and give you a little background on this. Since the project was originally conceived as a tract home development with just one architectural style, in response to getting to know the community a little better, as well as talking to people in the market for residences in this end of town, there was a thought that there would need to be a more diverse residential product. They've designed and prepared for us today the first of seven models that they're intending for a contemporary model. This is at the westernmost portion of the tract. Again, this is the, these are the homes that would back up to the Gulf. This home is designed entirely for western mountain exposure. We have a seventeen-foot-six roof at the high point, which is right here, kind of looking west into the mountains for the afternoon sun. Design Review enjoyed this and was excited to see diversification of the housing stock. There was discussion of a couple of details. For instance, in, in one of the details, the telescoping sunshade was smaller, but this is indeed the width that they intend to have, the telescoping sunshade that would actually slide out for additional solar control in the afternoons. We're recommending that you approve the final development plans, and then that this preliminary architecture be approved, subject to review by the Design Review Committee at final development stage. Design Review wanted to see construction documents of this home and the other ones when they're at about eighty to eighty-five percent complete. This concludes staff's presentation. We'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, staff?
In the whole tract, we were trying to figure out how many houses in this...
I'm sorry, there's forty-eight lots.
Anybody here wishing to address the commission on this item? I did attend the Design Review meeting, and the architecture was well-received. Any, do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve case 5.0845.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Oops.
Sorry about that.
I'm glad your thumb, your finger wasn't in there, Alex. We'll move on to item number 12. Application by Kay Hovnanian for Approval of Final Development Plans for Project Located at 3800 Sunrise Way North, R1C Zone, Section 36. We have a staff report?
Yes, you do. Directly across from the project that you approved two projects ago, the Coyote Run Apartments, is the first of a series of three larger developments. You've seen it many times before. Originally, it was the Burnett Project. It's also referred to as tentative map 30054. What we have for you today is the first half of the final development plans. They have brought the architecture through in a pretty rapid phase, because you saw this, oh, gosh, about a month ago. They've prepared the final development plans, which were reviewed and well-received by the Designer View Committee earlier this week. In probably two weeks' time, they'll bring you the final street improvement plans, clubhouse plans, and landscape construction documents, and the rest of the PD package for you to look at at that time. What we have is Model 501, 502A, 503D, which really are identical to the earlier models. And then the 600 models, the unit series of 600, we put on the other board for you. 601 series, a 602, and a 603. The one recommendation we have for you on this one, and this came from Designer View, is that all awnings be constructed out of metal. There's a concern that, given the price point of these houses, if we allowed awnings out of anything besides metal, we may have a problem five to six years down the line. Canvas just doesn't hold up under the desiccating sun that we have here. So it might be an appropriate design solution for a coastal area, but Designer View is recommending that we do get metal awnings on this project. Concludes staff's presentation. We'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. And you'll see it again approximately two weeks for the landscape plans and the clubhouse.
Again, I did, I attended the Design Review meeting on this, and there was, there were comments about the awnings and a couple of comments about some window placement, but other than the awning issue, the architecture was well-received. Anybody here wishing to speak on this particular item? Back to commission for any further comments or action?
What's the average square footage on these houses?
The average square footage ranges from about 16 to 2,600 square feet. Bottom is 16.
Yeah, these are, remembering back, these are smaller homes on smaller lots in a fairly tight subdivision for, and if I recall right, these are, the idea is to market these to people over 55.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. The lots here are 5,000 and 6,000 square foot. They're narrower lots, and they are designed for the recreation amenities of a senior project where they'll have about 500 units, expanded clubhouse, maybe some golf course opportunities, and have their enhanced recreational opportunities at the clubhouse.
I didn't use the term senior. I used the term over age 55.
Maybe senior is not the correct term. Maybe 55 and better.
Then I'm now in that range. Any further comments or motions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of case 5.0866, PD 267, with the condition that the awnings be of metal.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion second. Any further comment? If none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Alex. We'll go back to number nine.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a conflict on item nine.
In fact, I have one too. Thank you for reminding me.
I have a business interest within 500 feet.
Uh-oh. I just, I do have a conflict on that. My partner represents the, one of my partners represents the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, my recollection is on this one. We have two commissioners without conflicts, therefore you can take no action on this one. We have to wait for the non-conflicted commissioners to return, so we'll continue this to the next meeting.
All right. We need a motion on that?
We can't even vote on that.
We can't vote on that. So we have to continue at the next meeting.
Can we vote on that?
Just be cut.
Pardon?
We can't even have a vote to continue the matter.
Yeah, we'll just, staff will continue at the next item. You don't have to have a motion. Sorry about, I didn't hear you.
Well, if we'd had one of our other people here, we would have been fine, so it just turns out that way, unfortunately. I hope it doesn't cause the applicant any great inconvenience, but under the circumstances, there really isn't anything we can do.
The good news is they didn't fly down from Seattle with their full architectural team.
Yeah, thank God. God imagine that. I think we've finished our agenda, except for commission work program.
Mr. Chairman, on the work program, I think I've updated you on all items. There's no additional updates from the last time I updated you. The section, or excuse me, the Tocotz Creek Resort Subcommittee of the Planning Commission did meet, and if the Subcommittee would like, I can make a Subcommittee report.
Please.
The Subcommittee reviewed a proposal to build a hotel and timeshare project at the Tocotz Creek Golf Resort. They took a look at some conceptual site plans, some rerouting of the golf course, relocation of the existing driving range. And I think the Subcommittee was pleased with the progress of this project proposed on city land. And that completes my report.
Any of our Subcommittee members wish to comment?
Go ahead first. That's all right, and I'll see if I can add anything.
Great design team and with a difficult lot. They're doing a nice job.
Yeah, I would say that echoing that, really thorough as they went through the process and anticipated problems and moved things around, and were very adaptable as they were going through the project.
Any other report on our, on commission work program, Mr. Evans?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We'll pass to City Council, actions update.
Mr. Chairman, the council's going to discuss a number of items tonight. One would be the quarterly budget report. Two would be an update from the Budget Task Force that's been meeting for the last six months or so. They'll also discuss requests from the community for financial contributions to events and activities. And I believe that completes their activity. The last City Council meeting, the council did approve the Indian Oasis Resort Project for Mr. Noya and the Indian Alates. The general plan amendment as well as project. They also approved this small condominium project on South Palm Canyon Drive near Murray, and dealt with the undergrounding of utilities issue and supported the Planning Commission on that particular project. Those were the key issues at last council meeting that were planning-related. That completes our report.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Commission staff reports and requests. Anybody have anything they want to add for the, good of the group?
I do.
All right. Ms. Morantz.
Mr. Evans, I received something, which I assume everybody did, regarding the historic tennis club neighborhood meeting participants. And I'm really surprised that the developer is still looking at closing Keweeah Road when he got a lot of comments from us when he came to a study session regarding it. And is he still, is there still discussion with regard to doing that?
The application before the staff right now does not include closure of Keweeah. There is a general plan amendment to downgrade it from a collector roadway, 66 feet in width, down to a local roadway, which would be 50-foot in width. And that's the right-of-way we have on that whole block already. And going back to San Diego County, nobody here remembers when we were part of San Diego County. They vacated the right-of-way back to a 50-foot street already. So there'd be, the applicant may in the future ask that the street be closed, and that would be a separate issue. And there was certainly some support in the neighborhood for closing the street. You know, their concern is to basically cut through traffic off completely. The city engineer and planning staff have the similar concerns that the commission had with regards to keeping that street network open in the future.
Thank you. Any other, yes?
Doug, a question. We just had a large, what appeared to be successful biker weekend here in town. But as they flowed in, the flow of traffic, as it hit Olayo, became chaotic. They were turning in two directions. They didn't want people going through neighborhoods, but yet it was being directed. Is there going to be a debriefing or something where people can make comments towards how that was set up?
The Special Event Task Force debriefs on every project. The prime debriefing usually is at Main Street, you know, where the public provides input. We can give commissioners the Main Street agenda when it comes up. They meet the first Thursday of the month at 7:30 in the morning at Jerry Ogborne's office, and that's really the public part. Anybody can probably come to the Special Events Task Force. They're not closed to the public, but it's normally the technical people that are involved in the events. They debrief everyone. They work year-round on this event.
I'd be curious to be included in that.
We will try to. Which one would you like to go to? Main Street or Sept?
The second, Sept.
The one that's not at 7:30.
Whichever one is going to be more of an impact. Probably the debriefing with the city people, the task force.
Okay. Any other comments? If none, the meeting is adjourned.